We're so excited to have you join us this afternoon on Facebook Live as we have Thunder on Thursdays with our Twigs County stakeholders. It is an exciting time to be in Twigs County. Even though we're in a pandemic, we're not allowing the pandemic to have us. There are decisions that must be made concerning our scholars and we're up to the task. I want to say thank you to the Twigs County Board of Education for the job that they do, Chairwoman Joni Rainey, Vice Chair Mike Rouse, and those that serve along with them, Teresa Blackshear, Jaques Harris, and Shirley Stokes. We want to thank you for your entire service that you rendered to Twigs County. I want to thank the administrative staff for your entire service that you have rendered for the boys and girls in trying to make the best decisions possible. We met on this past Tuesday and we had to make some hard decisions. Our first mode of educating our boys and girls was that we would start school on August the 3rd. Our school board had approved a calendar that we would start on August the 3rd and we would start back and we would be going into our brick and mortar buildings at JES, Twigs County Middle, Twigs County High School. However, we cannot control the acts of the Almighty and the acts of this world. COVID-19 changed all of those plans. As a result of COVID-19, we will not be starting school on August the 3rd. We will start school on August the 17th. August the 17th, we will not be in our brick and mortar buildings. We will be starting school with distance learning virtually. What does that mean? That means that we will do distance learning. We will provide the program through edgenuity. We will provide support through our teachers, our certified teachers that we have, that we have hired, will provide support as the regular classroom. We will have a seamless transition for those that would have been in the brick and mortar building, those that will transition at some point hopefully throughout the year. We're hoping for a seamless transition. So we, this will not look like what it looked like in March. We are better prepared. We're excited about our electronic, our e-learning, electronic platform. So we're excited about that. These students will have a daily schedule. So we're excited about that, along with support from our educators. So we do feel good about what we have planned and we will be virtually and doing e-learning for the first nine weeks. During that nine weeks, we will be doing a lot of evaluating. We'll be evaluating the students, we'll be evaluating the program, we'll be evaluating and assessing teaching and learning. So there will be a lot of evaluating going on. Prior to the end of the nine weeks, we will make another decision what will Phase Two look like and we will get that out to the community in a timely fashion. We will continue with our Thunder on Thursday talks so that we might keep you informed. I know that there are several questions that you will have about how will we assist you? Some of those we will talk about tonight, some of those we will talk about in the near future. One of those we will talk about is how will we assist you with technology? Hopefully, most of you have some form of technology in your home or your students already. We know you do because most of them are on Facebook. Most of them have some form of technology because they're Snapchatting, they're tweeting, and they have some form of technology to communicate with their friends. So I'm well aware that most of them have some form of technology. According to the surveys that you completed and that you sent back, you said that 80% of you already have some form of technology. We cannot afford to provide every child with a tech, with some form of technology at your home, but we will provide each family that is in need of some form of technology with a device. One per family if needed. But you must sign off that you will be responsible in any damage that has occurred during the time that it is in your possession, that you will be responsible for that. I am sure that as we move forward through this process, there will be more questions that we will have to answer. So we will have a contract for you to sign as it relates to the piece of technology that we will share with you and your family. As we look at meals, school nutritious meals, misunderstanding, our school nutrition's director is online with us tonight, but we will feed, continue to have a feeding program where we will provide some form of breakfast and lunch to our scholars. It's very important that our students have a balanced meal and this way we can ensure that they are giving, getting a balanced meal. And so we're very thankful to Ms. Stanley and her staff that they will continue to provide. Thank you to the Board of Education for approving the recommendation of Superintendent to offer those meals to our scholars. So we're very excited about that. We're also excited that our students will also be able to take advantage of those courses that are offered through Central Georgia Tech. Central Georgia Tech is one of our best cooperative partners that we have. So those courses that are offered through Central Georgia Tech, we will still be able to offer those courses to our scholars. If there are some college courses through other colleges that our scholars are interested in, we will be offering those courses as well. Our students will not be denied any form of educational opportunity that we can provide if we were in the brick and mortar building. One of the things that we did approve on Tuesday night, that we will suspend all extracurricular activities. The school building for teaching and learning, I believe that is unsafe for us to be out participating in extracurricular activities. So tonight, we're fortunate to have with us Ms. Rhonda Howell from the Department of Public Health. Most of you know it as the Health Department. And along with, we have Mr. Brandon, our epidemiologist, who is along with her tonight. So we're glad to have him with us. So we will give Ms. Rhonda an opportunity to speak and we're going to give you opportunity to ask your questions. So you can send those questions in on Facebook Live and we will entertain those questions after Ms. Rhonda has had an opportunity to speak with you tonight and just kind of bring us up to date on COVID-19 and what's happening in the world of COVID-19. Ms. Rhonda, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. As you said, I am Rhonda Howell. I'm the county nurse manager in Twigs County at the Health Department. And Brandon is on also, Brandon Thornton, he is our environmentalist at the Health Department. He's on for more support for me and if I forget anything, he can chime in. But in Georgia right now, as of 3:00 PM this afternoon, we have 131,275 cases of COVID-19. That is since February 1st of this year. Twigs County, we have 50 cases in a few of our surrounding counties. Bibb has 2015, Houston has 1,108, Wilkinson has 127, and Lawrence has 422 cases. We are continuing at the Health Department, we have limited our services, trying to help our districts out with the case investigations because each one of those throughout our district and also with other districts in Georgia. All the positive cases, we're, we have to call and do investigation and find out, you know, give them guidance for isolation and also find out the contact who has been around them since testing positive or since they started having symptoms. And we end up calling the contacts and give them guidance as well. So we have been busy with trying to help out our district with that. So we have had some limited services now at the Health Department. And, but we are there, you know, if you have questions and we have been getting calls and, and we appreciate those calls. If we don't have the answer there at the Health Department, we will try to find out the answer and get back with you. And we are doing testing right now. We're doing it in all 13 of our counties in our districts. And each day, a different county, you know, counties have a different schedule. You can go on our North Central Health District website to see which counties are doing testing for that day. But we have a number to call, to schedule the testing and it's 1-844-987-0099. And here at Twigs, we test on Thursday from 9 until 12:00. And the other counties as well, test from 9 to 12:00. Bibb and Houston are open on 93 Friday. Beginning this Saturday, we will be swapping and each county will take a turn. But we, every 13th Saturday, we will be testing in Twigs. So we try to, you know, hit all the different counties on the weekend for those that are working. But there's no, you can test even if you don't have symptoms. You know, if you are having symptoms, we definitely recommend you to be tested. And if you're a contact to a case, then, you know, we recommend the, the best time to be tested would be the 10th day from the time you were exposed to that case. But like I said, if you've got, there's a lot, you know, to the COVID, what we, you know, to tell you that a lot we understand, a lot we don't understand. And so if you have any questions, please give us a call at 478-945-3351. And like I said, if we don't know the answer, we'll try to find out for you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Rhonda, for joining us this afternoon and we appreciate your support and we are in constant contact with the Twigs County Department of Health. And I served on that board with Rhonda and those that work there and we appreciate all that you do for our community. Thank you for joining us. Brandon, do you have anything that you would like to say?
Yeah, I just appreciate the work that I do with Ms. Stanley. We basically just work it in the background. I try to help out, give guidance for the kitchen managers and guidance for delivery of meals that y'all are planning to do. And so whenever she has questions, I try to help her out with, and get the right information to her. And I just, I just try to help support Rhonda also with whatever she needs to do too. But if anybody has questions, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us and please stay around. I'm sure there may be some questions that may be directed to you all this afternoon. So just hold tight. Mr. Basley, we will turn it over to question and answer at this time. And normally we go from 6 to 7:00. So we will take questions at this time if there is anyone with questions.
Right now, we don't have many questions. On our high school Facebook page, we have an outpouring of support from the football team themselves. They have a hashtag going on. It's called #WeNeedFootball. I just wanted to let you know that. We have a, we have a question from Mr. and Ms. Jamie Williams. Her question is, she has two questions. What about the special needs class? How do we do the special needs kids' learning?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Williams. We will be in touch, each case manager will be in touch with, because each case for special needs is different based upon their IEP. We will not abandon anyone's IEP. The IEP must be followed. So we will have to do that on an individual case, but we will be in touch real soon as it relates to that IEP.
At this moment, we don't have any other questions, so please put your questions in the comment box so we can get those answered for you. While we wait, if we have any more information that you guys want to present, talk about any changes that we have, give people time to put those questions in.
Well, why don't we just go ahead and allow our elementary principal to give us any updates that she might have and then we'll give it to Mr. Harris for middle high and then we'll give it to Transportation and Operations for Mr. Bacon to give it for any updates that he might have from that side. Ms. Jenkins?
Hello, everyone in our community. I just want to say that our plans are still the same in terms of educating our students. Very much like Mr. Dixon said, I want to assure you that our teachers will be ready and available to assist you in the learning process, that we will be here. I also want to talk a little bit about the opportunities for you, maybe if you have a chance to, when we go through the virtual experience, we still have internet at the schools. So depending on how your availability works, come in our parking lot and utilize that opportunity for you to go and use our internet in case there's any kind of challenges at home. I also want to talk about the library that's available. So just keep that in mind that we're here, our teachers will be here, and we will help think about all those extra resources that are outside of the building to help you educate our students. But we are good, our teachers are excited, many of them are working hard now, even though we are not currently working, the teachers aren't, but they are excited to welcome back our wonderful students.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. And you brought up a very valid point. I have been on a conference call most of the day with someone from Lowetor Yoda and they're trying to connect us with someone to help bring high-speed internet connectivity to Twigs County. So that is something that I've been working on all day. And let us not forget that we have a partnership with the Regional Library Services that helped to bring some connectivity to the county this past year. And we are exhausting all resources to try to get that back. So we're still working on those types of things. Thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Bacon? Ms. Harris?
Okay, hey, how's everyone doing? I'm just here just really to, this actually just worked the best, please support us in what we're trying to do at Twigs. We did keep the children best interest at heart and we made these decisions. But please ensure that they're going to get the education that we're gonna receive from the brick and mortar. We want to make sure that we stay right there as much as possible. Because if you just give us your support, because we are here for each and every child of Twigs County Public Schools system.
Mr. Bacon?
Good evening, everyone, Superintendent and community guests. One thing that we've been hearing about is that parents are concerned if their child goes to auxiliary programs, whether it's the school of the deaf or other programs outside of our county. Rest assured that we will be on those county's schedule and we will contact you to make sure that transportation is arranged. So if they're going to any of those other programs, we're going to make sure that they're transported and that we have built in a safety protocol that we will run through with the students and the parents to ensure that while they're on our buses, that they're as safe as possible. So we are, in upcoming weeks or so, will unveil our transportation, which, our transportation protocol, which will be for everyone, but since these students who are going to these auxiliary programs will be the first for the nine weeks. So we'll make sure every parent feels good about putting their child on the bus to receive those additional services. So I wanted everybody to know that. And that's pretty much all I have, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. One of the things that I would like to make mention to you, we will be on a modified type schedule, just trying to protect our employees in, with, with everything with this COVID-19 going on. So registration will be open every Monday from 8:00 to 12:00, 8:00 to 12:00. So if you need to register a pre-K student, if you need to register a returning student who has not been with the Twigs County Public School System, we will be open from 8:00 to 12:00. And if you would come to the Board Office, registration will be in the, as soon as you drive up to the Board Office to the left. And so we will have new place and we will have new signage for you to know exactly where that will go. And so we ask that you follow those directions and we will minimize the exposure and the contact that you will have with staff, but that will be on Mondays from 8:00 to 12:00, 8:00 until 12:00, every Monday for registration. So, and then we'll also, there will not be a time that you will not call, starting on Monday, that you will not get an answer. All calls will have be referred to a line that will be answered. All calls, if you call JES, that phone will go to someone, even if no one is in the building, Monday through Friday, that phone will be answered. Twigs County Middle High School, if you call Middle High School, that line has been transferred to someone that will answer, whether we're in the building or not. If you call the Board Office, that line has been transferred to someone who will answer Monday through Friday.
Okay, we have listed questions now. So we'll start, we have a question from Mr. Terrence Rouse. Can we please have our season back, please?
At this time, the Board has voted that we will suspend all extracurricular activities. Thank you, Mr. Terrence Rouse. We will continue to explore and research and follow the research, the numbers of COVID-19, and we will do what's in the best interest of boys and of our scholars. And if anything changes, we will definitely inform our coach and our administrative staff.
We have a question from Mr. Malik Dupont. We understand the severity of the COVID-19 epidemic and we are aware that it is still upon us as a football team. We will take the necessary precautions and the safety requirements that will ensure everyone stays safe and healthy throughout the season.
Okay.
We have a question from Ms. Tiffany P. V. Butler. As I say every Thursday, prayers for each, each one of you. Also, I am so proud to have the school district that truly cares for their students. I don't think everyone knows the stress each of you are, you have faced during this time for our children. I appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank you so much.
We have a statement from Mr. Shawn Williams. I hope the teacher of the younger kids are willing to help the parents after 5:00.
We're working on that plan as, as well.
From Ms. Lysadrian Bryant, is there an exact date of when students will return? Also, will students have a full day of virtual classes?
Even if we were in a brick and mortar, we would not have a student in front of a computer for eight hours. So we will not have students in front of the computer for eight hours. There is a full schedule for students. But would you rephrase that question?
She just wanted to know what they have to be online all day.
Okay, they, they will not be online all day, but they will have a full schedule.
All right, we have a question from Ms. Melissa McWhither. My son is moving to middle school and I need to know how to get with internet. My son is also ADD and autistic.
Okay, Ms. McWhither, if you will make sure that we have your, well, we have your information, your son is going to the middle school, we will contact you this week. Ms. Elizabeth Rich will contact you this week and we will have a personal conversation with you.
A question from Ms. Betty Jo Glover. Will students with a 504 plan be given extra support?
A 504 plan is a document that is supported educationally and we will follow all of those documents and plans that have been put in place for students. Yes.
Ms. Sheila Baker Stevens, what will the start-stop times be for the online learning?
Okay, we have, right now, we are, start-stop times will be August the 17th and we will go for nine weeks and we will reevaluate it prior to the end of the nine weeks. Start-stop times will be our regular school day. I'm assuming we'll probably, we have some other details to work out, but we will, there will be some flexibility because as we will utilize our Google Classroom, there will be some things that will post it that kids can go back and look at. So there's some things, there were some details that we still have to work out with it. And we're also trying to be as flexible as we possibly can be so that parents that have different schedules will still be able to help their kids, be able to get the support that they need. Of course, we can't run a 8 to 12 program at midnight, but we want to be able to offer as much support as we can offer.
Ms. Barbara Curry, she wants to know when will remote learning be available to sign up for?
You will not have to sign up for remote learning. Everyone will start with the remote learning. You will have the opportunity to sign up because once we start, for those that would like to stay on remote learning, we will have another date to do that. But because everyone is starting for the first nine weeks, that they change.
Okay, Ms. Jamie Williams, will there still be able, will they still be able to graduate this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Retaya Stevens Carr, she wants to know what is the process for virtual learning at JES? Is there a certain time that students will need to be online?
There will be some mandates of certain times when students that will need phonetics and things that are basic foundational things for elementary students, there will be some mandates, yes, ma'am. As we unfold it, we should have more of that information, maybe even as early as next Thursday, Ms. Carr.
Ms. Jenkins, do you have anything else for that?
Well, I would say that Ms. Carr, she remembers like over the, from March, April, and May, because she was very instrumental in getting the kid, her baby on when they were doing small group. It's going to look somewhat like that, but of course we're fine tuning. We'll have a different teacher this year, but there will be those independent moments and those isolated moments and small group moments, much like she was familiar with, that will allow her kid to have that educational spirit that she supports and helps us with.
We have a question from Ms. Nikki Cannon. Is there any information pertaining to new pre-K students?
Yes, if you have completed your application, from what I understand, everyone has been contacted that you are in the program and the DCL does support distance learning with pre-K. And we will have a special feature on pre-K next week.
Ms. Lucinda Tharp, how in the world are the sixth graders supposed to know who their
We will do a virtual open house and we will contact, everyone will receive a letter in regards to what their schedule and with who their teachers are.
Ms. Kristy Bramble, where do we sign up for the laptops?
We will be, we will continue with our sessions of this nature and we will provide that information with, within the coming weeks.
Ms. Sheila Hackton, when will we get to meet our child's teacher at JES School?
That will be within the coming weeks. You will meet him probably virtually. The teachers will make contact, just like we're doing tonight, and it will be in this shape, form, or fashion.
Ms. Retaya Carr, are we still doing lunch for students during the first nine weeks of virtual learning and what would that look like with the current pandemic?
Yes, we will still be doing, did she say lunch?
Yes.
Yes, we will still be doing the lunch. It will be much like we did during the summer and during the COVID interruption that we had.
Miss Nicole Pauldo, how do we get the virtual number for our kids learning at home?
Okay, um, all of that information will be incumbent upon us to get that to you and to make sure that you have the understanding of the login, how to login. Uh, we will have your, your child's teacher, um, we'll go over all of that information with you.
Miss Michelle Warner, Warner, when can we expect info on the electronic site, schedules, teachers, et cetera?
Within the next couple of weeks.
Miss Johanna Martinez, what are the times for online learn?
It will be throughout the day. Um, as Ms. Jenkins stated, um, it will be, uh, based upon your child's grade level and based upon, um, the learning model that is going on at that level that your child is.
Miss Nicole Paul, Miss Nicole Pauldo has a statement, I, I'm calling to get my daughter's virtual learning number, but got no answer.
We don't have that as of just yet. And, um, and now, uh, Monday, if she would call on Monday, if she have any other questions, someone will be able to answer for her.
Miss Vinnie Dupree, how would a student's progress be assessed?
Um, if, Ms. Dupree, I don't know if you were on last week, um, but we went through that, um, assessment piece last week um, with edgenuity as well as the teacher, classroom teacher, it will not look like it looked in March. Um, with edgenuity, there is an assessment piece that is built in within our e-learning platform as well as the teacher will, because of the interaction with the classroom teacher, will be also doing, um, some assessment.
Miss Lisa Ann Smith, have you thought about Plexiglas shields for students' desks or tables when students return?
We've thought about a lot of Plexiglas, we've thought about a lot of face shields, we've thought about a lot of, um, just protective gear.
Miss Johanna Martinez, she wants to know how will attendance be taken?
Well, attendance will be taken remotely, because when your child logs in, there is a, we can tell how long your child is on that computer, whether your child is engaged on that computer or not.
Okay, Miss Retoria Carr, she has a statement, she says, thank you all so much for putting our students and staff's safety first. I personally experienced this virus and it is no joke, I had anxiety about my son's academics, but it has been eased. Thank you all again, welcome back, Ms. Whuppin'. Um, we have a comment from Mister Christian Williams. What about the other counters that have our football team scheduled? Want the games result in an automatic football, I know, uh, automatic forfeit. I know what the first priority is to make sure we, the students are safe, but at this point, I just want sports back.
Thank you, um, Mister Williams, and we are exploring every avenue of it and as we get, glean more information, um, we will inform you, um, and keep you for, informed. And if there are any changes, we will definitely update you as it relates to that.
Miss Michaela Foster, she says, taking extracurricular activities away brings concerns, especially for seniors. What if sports was all they had scholarship-wise? It may seem as if a big problem, but most of us actually have a passion for what we do.
Yes, yes, ma'am, and I agree, yes, ma'am.
I'm looking now, those are the questions we have on those pages, so I'm looking through the other ones. Uh, Miss April Plankett, she says, thank you everyone for working so hard on everything.
Thank you.
Miss Angela Kathar, if a child does not attend class at all, will this result in possible truancy, how will this look?
That will be with the, um, legal justice system.
Okay, Miss LaChisa Buttworth, how often will meals be delivered?
We're working through that process, um, our school nutrition department is governed, um, by the state and so they will tell us how and how often and when that will have to be done. So we're in conversation with that. Um, we should be able to unfold that to you, um, hopefully within the next coming week.
Okay, Mister Scott Malone, what intercept, internet service do you have? Is there a plan for a wireless option for the students?
Um, we, we don't have an internet service. The only internet service provider in the county that I'm aware of is Windstream.
Miss Vanessa Williams, what is the online software for the J E S? And will it be accessible from personal computers or will the child have to check out computers from the school?
Repeat that, please.
What is the on, what is the online software for J E S? And will it be accessible from personal computers or will the child have to check out computers from the school?
It will be accessible from personal computers.
Miss LaChisa Burt- Buttworth, how often will meals be delivered?
Um, as I just stated, um, we are in discussion concerning how often we're going to deliver meals. Once we get the guidelines, we, we have to apply, um, to the state to get it approved, um, and the board approve for us to do it. And this family will submit that paperwork and as soon as we get that approved by the state and they tell us, give us the plan, we will get that word out, uh, maybe even as early as next Thursday.
Okay, that's all the questions we have thus far.
Well, we appreciate you all joining us, um, this Thursday, um, for our Thunder on Thursday. Uh, we look forward to you joining us next Thursday and, um, we shall be back next Thursday, six o'clock P M. for Thunder on Thursday, Coke Talk. And we want to do what's best and I grant you, um, all those that are concerned about football, we are researching and we're doing, um, the very best that we can. And if there's any, uh, changes, if there's anything that we can do, rest assured that we will do. Um, have a great evening and, uh, stay in touch. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.